Thank you, Jacob, and again, welcome, everybody. So, before we begin, we ask all the candidates and the audience to respect each other's time and not to interrupt. We also ask that you follow the rules of civil discourse, keeping your tone non-confrontational and your language respectful. And again, you have two minutes for each response. So, as Jacob mentioned, we will start out this evening by allowing each candidate two minutes to introduce yourself, and I'll go ahead and start with Mr. Dunning. You have two minutes.
It's great to see so many people here. And there have been several forums. There's a lot that's been recorded. You can find it out there. I thought I would say something a little bit different tonight. If you've heard me talk about getting everyone to the table and my background in conflict resolution, and you can go look that up. But I want to just take this two minutes to say why. Why am I doing this? I'm a child of the Cold War. You might think, what does that have to do with Richmond? I grew up in Northern California, not in Russia, not in Kosovo, not in East Timor, not in Indonesia, not in the Middle East, not in the places that I've worked in my career. But here in Northern California, no dangers in the world, right? In fact, I grew up in a place, a rural place, where I didn't have to worry about crossing the street. I didn't have to worry. When I was seven years old, I rode my bike to school five miles. Can you believe that? I would never let my kids do that here. Not that they should, anyway. But I say this to say that my existential crisis, my fear growing up, was of nuclear weapons raining down on California. Now, you might think that's crazy, but I've been reflecting a lot on where this is coming from. And as I've grown up and become a problem solver professionally, what I've realized is that that desire to see everyone get along is not just a wishy-washy kumbaya thing. It's practical. And what I'm doing, trying to bring collaborative leadership into politics, is to set an example of how we can all work toward things that matter by having everyone at the table. Now, that might sound just way too nuanced and complex. And so I invite you to reach out, give me a call, we'll sit down, we'll have coffee, I'll tell you more. Most of my supporters, the really diehard supporters, that's how they've come to support me, when they understand what I'm really about. We'll say more later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Now, Councilmember Jimenez, you have two minutes.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Claudia Jimenez. My name is Claudia Jimenez. I am the current Vice Mayor of Richmond and representing District 6 in City Council. I want to thank all the organizations who organized this, but one special organization who is showing up here, pushing us to be bettered by the immigrant community, the Rising Juntoz. I see many of the leaders who I have worked for years with them. So, thank you for being here as well and be engaged in this process. As a woman of color, an immigrant from Colombia, and a mother, I see this space in the leadership and in the council as a way to really change the lives of the community in really detailed ways and really with intentions, and that we can show that. My work is not... I'm sorry, thank you. My work in the community didn't start just when I started running for council. It's coming back many, many years ago as a community organizer, leading campaigns like Invest in People No Prison, that was able to bring $5.2 million into the community for services for those coming home from incarceration. I will talk more about what I had done in the city, but I had been affected. I had been able to save over $80 million to the city in bad loans and reinvest that in things that matters to the community, like $20 million into the public library for a full renovation, doing some calming traffic issues. So, I will talk more about that as the time comes. Muchas gracias.
Thank you both. So, next, these are questions compiled by journalists at the four co-hosting media outlets. We ask that you keep responses, again, to two minutes, and we'll just jump right in. The first question is simple. Why should voters choose you? We're going to go ahead and start with Councilmember Jimenez. Go ahead and start.
Okay, I think one of the things is that I had shown, like, one in the last forum, one of the residents on District 6 called me and said, "You can show the receipts. You had done a lot of good work in the city, and you can show that." So, I had been affected in putting money into things that matter for the community. When I got here, we have a deficit of $90 million. And right now, we have a reserve level that went up from 12% when I got there to 21%. We had been able to, instead of having deficits, to have surplus, that we were able, as I said before, put $20 million into the full renovation of the library. We had been doing an holistic approach of public safety, where we are launching the Community Crisis Response Program, so we can have other services for those who are suffering from mental health issues or nonviolent issues, to be able to have better services in the community. And my platform is really concrete. I talk about the Street of the Future. That is something that the community likes in terms of like how we can see the streets as a more environmentally biking and walkable, safer and friendly for the community. Also, I invite you to come tomorrow to the City Council to have the... to see the Green and Blue New Deal as a way to see how we can just transition from an economy of fossil fuel to a green community. And I finish with that. I was in the Ad-Hoc Committee that made Chevron to pay over half a billion dollars into the city that we are going to be using next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Candidate Dunning, you have two minutes.
If you listen to any of the positions, the values, the goals spoken by virtually any candidate in this district and any other district, there's a ton of common ground. We're all saying the same things, and if anyone's listening, we all know that people want a Richmond that's safe, clean, and fair for everyone. I know that because I covered 530 miles on foot through every single street in Richmond two years ago, and I heard from 5,000 people face to face. And guess what? I'm not coming into office with a plan for how I'm going to get those things done other than do better than we've done by getting people working together more effectively. I agree with all the goals that were just mentioned. I'm not a threat to those goals. I think we can do even better. Take public safety, for example. After polling 5,000 people across the city, I hear again and again and again that the number one issue, when I walk up to someone and say, "Hey, if I'm elected, what do you want to have in my mind?" The number one thing I hear, the most frequent response, has something to do with safety. Either crime or just, a guy the other day told me that the greatest risk in his life is crossing Barrett Avenue on foot. Everybody can relate to that. The question is, how do we get there? And I don't think we get there simply by budget allocations. I think we get there by better process. And what I bring to this, I'm all talk right now in terms of Richmond, but what I'm bringing to this is 25 years of concrete experience in conflict resolution and peace building. Been to 60 countries, 49 states. That's been my career. I've loved it. And it breaks my heart to see Richmond being a microcosm of what's happening on a larger level in terms of, we've got all this diversity we could leverage, but instead, it's whoever's in power just does what they want. I'm not trying to push anyone out. I'm trying to invite more people in. And I think when we talk more about different issues, I'll say more about how. Thanks.
Thank you. So, our next question, we're going to start with Mr. Dunning. Understanding that the community will have input in how the city will spend, as you said, the half a billion dollars it will receive from Chevron over the next 10 years, what three priorities would you like the money to be spent on?
Well, I think the question's a bit of a non sequitur, and I'll tell you why. The Chevron money, read the fine print, folks, here's details, facts. The Chevron money goes into the general fund. We have a mechanism for budgeting in this city that involves the mayor's office and the city manager's office, hopefully collaborating, but certainly conferring on putting a budget forth to the City Council. The City Council then adopts it, gives feedback, makes changes. But ultimately, there is a process for how we allocate our budget. So, it's great that we're going to be getting an infusion of 50-plus million dollars a year for the next 10 years. I think the number one thing we should be considering there is that that is temporary. If we change our culture of how we're spending money with the assumption that we're going to keep getting that $50 million, that's not very good fiscal responsibility. So, you know, we've got a nearly $400 million unfunded pension liability right now. If everyone, if you don't know what that means, we've guaranteed that we will pay the pensions of folks after they retire in perpetuity. And if you do the math on it, we're about $400 million short of making ends meet. And if we don't, the city goes bankrupt. And we don't get to pave the streets. We don't get to have enough police. We don't get to have enough, and all the things that a city is supposed to take care of. So, it would stand to reason that we should use the money to invest, and what I mean, in things that make us better off in the future. But guess what? I don't think my opinion should matter more than one person in the city. I would like to see a comprehensive collaborative process that really leverages the voice of all people in the city, not just for this $50 million, but frankly, for the entire budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Jimenez, you have two minutes.
Yeah, so, I think like we have been here in the community, and we will continue to do that. So, there is an idea and a proposal to create a community advisory board that help us, like, kind of like what, probably some ideas of how Measure X in the county was spent and how that process went. So, many, many residents in Richmond participated, so that could be also one thing. We had been here in the community, and there had been many surveys, and we have, like, for instance, a lot of the fair maintenance in our community buildings. We need to put some of this money into that, and I think like this is a good use of that money. We need to create different funds. It's true. It's coming to the general fund, but you can create different funds where you can put that money into. We have many different funds for many different things. Some of them have been created by borders that, like, for instance, Measure E and Measure G, but others are some things that the council commit to do that. So, we can create these funds, so we can allocate that money and resources that are going to be specific. I think just transition needs to be there, and it's kind of like, this money needs to bring more revenue. And I, like, this is only 10 years, and we need to make sure that in these 10 years, we can create an economy that is not as dependent as we are right now of the fossil fuel industry. And this is why I and Councilmember McGlaughlin are put an item to have the Green and Blue New Deal Plan that is going to present tomorrow, to give us some ideas about that. We don't have, like, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but what we need is to create the infrastructure and the spaces so people can start participating. Thank you.
Thank you. For the next question, we're going to start with Councilmember Jimenez. About a third of this district's population is Latino. What are some of the top issues these communities have shared with you during your campaign? And how would you address their needs if reelected?
Yeah, thank you so much, and gracias. One of the things is, I think like we need better language access. So, I applaud you to have this conversation translated. One of the things that I advocated was for Tomas Espinoza, who is here, to be part of the RIN Board. And that changed the dynamic of the RIN Board, and it's the first RIN Board in the state that is totally bilingual. And it hasn't been that easy, right, Tomas? But we are trying to do, and we need to do that with the City Council as well. So, I am working on that. Also, there is a tax section without representation. We need to make sure that every resident in Richmond can be their voice, be heard, and vote in local elections. And we can do that. Also, I just want to finish with this program. We listen to the street vendors and the 23rd merchants around the street vendors on the sidewalks. So, we are launching, and is there, please go to McDonald and Marina Bay for the Street Vendor Food Core Thursdays and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., where we are supporting small vendors. A lot of them are immigrants that are just fighting for better outcomes in their lives and support their families. So, we did that. We put $200,000, and we are going to put more because we believe that these kind of programs are the things that can support our immigrant communities and non-citizens communities to improve their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Dunning, you have two minutes.
When I was with, I was the Global Director of Leadership and Training for Search for Common Ground, the world's largest peace-building organization. And I had the remarkable privilege of working with Congressman John Lewis for four years. He was a mentor to me. We went to Alabama four times on civil rights pilgrimages. The reason I say this is John Lewis would often give this speech, I can give it for you, I'll just give you a snippet, again and again and again, he would say, "We all live in the same house." And he would say, "The American House." And I think we need to bring that mindset to Richmond. We are an extraordinarily diverse community. And when I use the word "community," I refer to the entire community of 115,000 people, all living under the same kind of sky, at least 30 square miles across. And we need to get beyond thinking about just one group or another, but think about the needs that we all have. That's not to say that there aren't unique challenges. So, if we want to ask about the Latino community in District 6, there are areas where, you know, people tend to have neighborhoods where a lot of people look like them around them. I'm right in the middle of the North and East, where my block is just a full-on rainbow. I love it. But if we, so if we want to parse out the Latinos from my block, we're going to go every few houses. So, where's the Latino community in Richmond? It's everywhere. And yes, there are concentrations. One concentration is along the 23rd Street corridor. And one organization that advocates for the Latino community along the 23rd Street corridor is the 23rd Street Merchants Association. And I'm proud to have their endorsement. And the reason they told me that they've endorsed me, I'll be as respectful as possible, is because they want someone who will listen and bring people to the table to get things done. Now, I don't have the answers to those problems yet because we haven't gotten all the stakeholders to the table. But they're really excited to be behind me and support me. I'm also endorsed by former Councilmember John Marquez. I'm also endorsed by community leader Yanni Garcia. I'm endorsed by a lot of folks who are very closely in touch with the Latino community, and all I can say is they trust me. Thank you.
Thank you. So, our next question has to do with street safety. And first, we're going to go to Mr. Dunning for that, and you had mentioned about street safety earlier. The city identified 18 particularly hazardous intersections citywide that merit traffic calming measures. District 6 is definitely home to some problematic streets, for example, Solano Avenue from I-80 to San Pablo Avenue. What do you recommend for these issues?
That's the Solano Speedway we're talking about? Yeah. So, of the 18, quote, "traffic calming measures" that are talked about, one of them is a drainage fix. I'm not quite sure what that means. One is an ADA sidewalk. One is a bike signal. There are four speed bumps on that list. There are three stripes and signage updates on that list. There is one railroad crossing fix. And there are two, what's named on the list as sideshows. I think what they mean is roundabouts to prevent sideshows, but on the list published by the city, it just says, "sideshowes," is the project. I'll try not to be snarky about that. But, but we need traffic calming devices, yes. But if you think about the way things are going now, it's kind of a game of whack-a-mole. Near Berg Park, where I live, we, our community spent years advocating to get a roundabout put in. And it does stop people going 70 miles an hour right by the park, and that's a good thing. But in terms of sideshows, which if anyone saw the news last night, it's not pretty. But in our neighborhood, right there at Berg Park, it's become a Level 10 video game challenge in real life for people who are really good at spinning donuts and drifting because the roundabout actually makes it a harder challenge for them. So, sure, let's get in more devices. You know, I talk to folks all the time. If we were to put a speed bump on every block where someone wants one, guess what, folks? There would be a speed bump on every block in Richmond. Maybe we need that. I don't know. Let's do, let's, let's talk, let's see. But there's something missing in this picture. Yes, we need all these great devices, and we can do more. We also need a reasonable amount of enforcement. Right now, we have half the police department that we did under President Obama's, under our nationally acclaimed program that President Obama pointed out as a progressive model of policing to follow. We had 200 sworn officers then. Now, we're at about 100. We need more enforcement, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Jimenez, you have two minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Yes. So, District 6 is one of the areas with more collisions. And I have been working with communities, the Keith, Barrett, and Keith and Barrett. And I met with them, and I got the Public Works Director. And because of that meeting, that I listened, what the issues and what are the solutions they wanted to have, I was able to find $1.2 million and get the support of the council members to allocate $1.2 million into the solutions. And this is how the traffic calming program was created. And we, and I'm glad that Sean Dunning is, had done his homework before to know what we did. We use a matrix to be able to allocate and choose these 18 projects, and that matrix has so many things, and it's an equitable matrix to choose. So, this year, we were able, because we know that this is important, we were able to allocate $1.6 million. So, we create the program that it wasn't existed before. And we create a website where people can put their issue, the, the, there's a place where you think they need some solutions to be in that, to be in the queue. But we knew that that wasn't enough because it's not enough, and we need a real Street of the Future where we just don't think bigger in terms of the solution. So, this year, we were able to have an item, an item on the agenda, co-sponsored by Councilmember McGlaughlin, Robinson, and I, where we created the the Calming Division, where two staffers, planners, and an engineer to ramp up this program. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have time for one more question before Q and A, and then we'll start with you, Councilmember Jimenez. Understanding that the community, or, sorry, wrong one. "We spent a few hours walking the district to take, to take a pulse of residents' issues and heard some particular issues are frustrating residents and businesses, such as vandalism, lack of upkeep, such as overflowing trash, and a lack of parking. How would you address these issues?" You have two minutes.
Yeah, thank you. We had been allocating resources. I think like what happened before was that the city was in deficit. Before I got there, there was $90 million in deficit, and it was a lot of hiring that didn't happen because of that. So, what we had been able to do is working on stabilizing the finances, so now we had the means to hire more people. So, we are hiring for the traffic enforcement, the co-enforcement, and we are focusing a lot of the staffing in, in the Public Works Department because it's where the abatement happened to, to really ramp up that. We are also, so we are putting the money into this allocation and to get more staffing so we can have the services that our community needs and deserve. Thank you.
So, again, my, my platform is 100% reflective of the needs of the community, 115,000 people community. And it's safe, clean, fair. And I think what we're talking about here is a little mixture of safe and clean, perhaps. Everything costs money. We want to talk about the streets of the future? That is great. It costs money. We want to talk about forming a new division of our city? That costs money. Everything costs money. And money's not the answer to everything, either. Even with limited funds, if we were to collaborate more effectively as a city, as a community, we might be able to get things done. I'm proud that there are several members, you know, just residents in my neighborhood who make it a habit to go around, and they take a bag with them when they're walking their dog, and they pick up garbage along the way. There's a lot of great resources in our city. If you come across vandalism, like graffiti, I don't know if you know this, but there's a Richmond app. You can get it on your phone, or you can just call the number. And there's a guy, Ed Poe, who drives around all day long with every color of paint in the back of his truck, and he covers up graffiti all day long, all day long. But if you don't call, they might not know about it. So, it's, there are some things that just require better communication and better collaboration. There are other things, when we look at things like the, the general sense of, of presence. Do you feel safe going around Richmond? That's a combination of how the environment feels, which is how it appears. And it's also the very real experience of, if you call for help, do you know that help is coming? Whether that be police, whether it be an alternative crisis response, whether it be a fire department, everyone deserves to know that if they need help and they call for help, it's on the way. And I've talked to lifelong residents who are more concerned about their safety now than they were when there were 60 or 90 homicides, 62 homicides a year. Why? Because they feel like, at least back then, if they called the police, they would come. Now, I don't think police are the answer to everything, folks. I've never said that. But right now, we're woefully under-resourced, and that costs money.
Thank you both. So, I want to make sure that we allow enough time for questions from the community. If you have a question, please raise your hand. Someone will be running around with a mic. And remember, if you are going to speak into the mic with a question, to speak slowly for Spanish interpretation. And if you have completed a card, please raise the card in the air, and someone will come around and pick it up. In the interest of time, we ask you, please get, please keep your question direct, succinct, respectful, and again, to the point. So, I'm going to start with a mic question, I think. Let's see. One of the cards. Actually, we're going to go ahead and start with one of the cards that we have. And this first question is for Claudia specifically. "Two years ago, you and the majority of the City Council voted against enforcement for an education campaign to help combat sideshows. What is the status of that education campaign?"
So, thank you, Harry. Very hinted for, for that question. We voted to no prosecute residents who were going to be part of that. But we had, like, we had laws in the books that need, like, we had, like, the police had been enforcing. We also were able to have more cameras and the licensed readers that is helping, actually. The, the last report of the chief of police say that these are great accomplishments for them in terms of like continuing to have more cameras and continue to have the licensed readers for that. So, what we want is to be able to resolve these things with other solutions as well. We cannot pretend that in each corner, we can have a police. The average police cost to the city with overtime over $375 per year. So, we need to find other solutions as well, and this is why the Street of the Future is one. Putting the, the cameras is another thing. We have been, and also education, like, I think like the Public Works Department Director say, like, it's education enforcement and engineering. eh, Director say, like, it's education enforcement and engineering solution. And I think, like, we are doing that in a way that it can bring the solution, because we, no, no one thing is, is the thing that is going to resolve an issue. We need to put together many things, and this is what we are doing in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the question was about education with regard to sideshows, and I hate to say it, but I think the only education happening out there is how to do donuts more effectively. I'm sorry. Uh, last night, there were hundreds of vehicles, uh, and drivers who chose Richmond. I highly doubt many of them are from Richmond, but they chose to come to Hilltop in Richmond and have a massive sideshow, hundreds of vehicles. And at the time, they decided, let's, let's, uh, destroy a bunch of vehicles in the nearby car lots as well. So just, there's video all over, you can find it. Uh, I think they were improving their skills on how to spin. I saw some pretty good moves, you know, one guy kind of spun one way and then he took it right into another way. Seriously, I don't think we're going to educate people out of doing that. I just, I'm sorry, I just don't see that as realistic. Um, with regard to laws on the books, about five, six years ago, I think it was, our progressive council, uh, passed a law that I support wholeheartedly, which is we should not have flavored tobacco in Richmond. There's all sorts of reasons. If you have bubblegum flavored tobacco, clearly there's only one reason for that, right? Good law. Well, guess what? When our council cut our police budget significantly, one of the first things to go is the regulatory unit. Go into any smoke shop in Richmond right now and you'll probably find flavored tobacco for your nearest neighborhood kids, right? I mean, idealism is great, but we got to make it practical. And the practical effect here is the enforcement has a place in our society. There are lots of other methods as well. I'm, I've never, ever once said that police are the answer to everything, but we got to stop ignoring the fact that they are an important part of our society. You look at any well-run city anywhere in this country, and unfortunately, a good chunk of that budget is going to be for public safety, and a good chunk of public safety is police. Um, so there's a lot more we could talk about this, but, uh, at the end of the day, we need to, we need to send a signal that Richmond is not a place where you can just do whatever you want.
Thank you. And I'd also like to mention, I'd also like to mention, um, should have mentioned this before, but some questions can be directed directly to one specific candidate. Um, so if you'd like to direct one of your questions to a specific candidate, that is also possible. Are we ready for a mic question, or should I continue with the cards?
I would like you to speak more about rent control and casa justa. And what you are going to do to help protect tenants.
Hola, buenas noches. Uh, gracias para tu pregunta. Lo siento, you habla español un poquito, but you know.
Thank you, good evening, thank you for your questions. I'm sorry, I speak limited Spanish.
That was good. Um, I support rent control. Again, let me say that again, loud and clear, because I know people are hearing different messages. Sean Dunning supports rent control. And I am critically concerned about the way rent control is being implemented in Richmond. We have, so there's a lot of money that goes into this program. The director of our program makes over $200,000 a year. Renters need protection. If, if you're being taken advantage of by the housing provider, that's not okay. And I think there's a good reason for having protection. And I've met mom and pop landlords, housing providers, all over the city, who are getting out of making their home available for other people. Because in Richmond, even though statewide, if you want to, if, if the owner, let's say, I retire and I want to travel the world and rent out my house for a few years, and then come back to it, the fact of the matter is, and there are plenty of case studies that show this, you may come back and not be able to get back into your house, even though you signed a lease for one year or two years, because state law says, if you're the renter, you can stay as long as you want. I think that makes sense in commercial rental units. I think we should make a distinction between commercial rental units and mom and pop housing providers, because the effect of this policy is, in fact, fewer houses are available for rent now. People just sell them and they go to a homeowner. I, I support rent control, and I think we need more rental units in our community, not fewer. Thank you.
Hola, Tomasa, gracias por la pregunta y gracias por servir en el control de la renta.
Thank you, Tomasa, thank you for your question, and thank you for supporting rent control.
Yeah, and being the board. So you cannot say you support rent control and then criticize how much money the director of the rent program makes. Uh, I think I, I support it and I put it on the, uh, on the ballot. Um, Richmond resident voted overwhelmingly to say that we need rent control. And we need rent control because we want to keep our people and especially low-income communities here in our city. So we cannot just pretend that, uh, we can, we, we can legislate, uh, and, and, and try to make holes in the legislations and, and take this protection for the most vulnerable people, which is the renters. I, and I rent my, uh, my back of the house. I went to Columbia, I rent my house. And I came back two years later, I had to pay the fee, relocation fee, and I come back to my house. There is 10 or more issues for just cause for eviction. So there is protection for the landlords and for the renters. And I think, like, we, we, as a legislator, we need to be able to, uh, put in the balance, uh, who is the most affected? Who, when we decided not to move back, is, is getting without a house? And how we really made regulations that protects people who don't have a house? So I believe, as a homeowner, that rent control is a good thing to have in our city, so we can protect our most vulnerable community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to read a question off a card. This question was written in Spanish, but I'll be reading it out in English. As a group, it's very important to us that our streets and walkways are safe. And in good state for our families and our children. How are you going to ensure that the needs of the community are heard? And we're going to go ahead and start with you, uh, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, so I am not saying that I am going to be your voice in Richmond. I am always fighting to make sure that you are there, so your voice is heard louder and clear. This is what I had been working in the community, and this is what in 2020, uh, people voted for me. Uh, we, uh, yeah, everything costs, is true. And if we don't have the means to pay for this, then how we are going to do it? So this is what I had been focusing really, in, like, really sharp in the budget. So we don't get the deficit, we don't cut more. And instead, we were able, because I did that, and city council approved it, were able to get out of predatory loan and save 84 million dollars in the city. I was able with the ad hoc committee to bring the money that Chevron paid. So we are going to have the means to do what the community is telling us to do. We had been steady getting more people into the, the city to work with the city, and, and this is the process. So we are moving forward. And I think, like, a lot of the holistic view about public safety is that we have our parks clean, we have our street cleans, we have more, eh, spaces that are being used for the families and community to do recreation, we have good quality programs for the youth, we create a 500 youth, just from kids from 16 to 26, and small businesses can apply to get, eh, this, eh, labor into their businesses paid by the city. This is what we are doing here. It's clear, like, we, we are trying to make Richmond a better, financially stable city, and we are doing it right now. Thank you.
Yes, of course. So I'll repeat the question. As a group, it's very important that our streets and our walkways are safe and in good state for our families and children. How will you ensure that our, that the needs of the community are heard?
So how will I ensure that the needs of our community are heard for safe streets? These are issues we've been talking about, but I want to talk about how I will do that. I'm proud to say that if I get the honor to serve you, you will not hear me say that I got you anything. Oops, hear that again. You won't hear me say that I got this, or I got that. You will hear me use the word "we" a lot. And the only thing that I will take credit for is that I will invite all stakeholders to the table. I will not be beholden to any special interest group telling me how to vote or what the policy should be that I'm pushing forward. I will listen to that special interest group, and that one, and this one, and you, and you, and you, and you. And I know that if we're going to find breakthrough solutions, let's face it, these issues are age-old. Take any candidate forum from the last 50 years, it's probably the same script. But if we are going to find breakthrough solutions, things that have never been thought of before, guess what? I don't know what that is yet, but what I know from my career, what I know to be absolutely true, is that the best, most brilliant, most creative, comprehensive solutions come not from one way of thinking, but from leveraging multiple ways of thinking. So what I will do is be downright dogmatic about ensuring that all voices are actually at the table, not just, "Thank you, now go away, I'm going to do what I'm going to do anyway." But I don't know the answer yet, because we have not co-created it. And if you want to trust in something, trust in the fact that your voice will matter with me, especially if you disagree with what you think I'm going after. Right now, if you were to imagine someone on city council pushing whatever policy through, if you agreed with them, then great, you probably feel great about it. But ask yourself the question, does your voice really matter? If you see it different than what they're pushing, do they listen to you? I will. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we can take another microphone question.
Thank you. We have two extraordinary candidates here, but I have to ask a question that's very important. That I have a lot of my Hispanic people that own restaurants on 23rd Street. I need to know from both of you, one from Claudia, why haven't you done something about the vendors that have set up shop every single night and weekend in front of the restaurants that are paying a business license, which generates money for the city? For you, Sean, what will you do to make that change? And then for the both of you, what are you doing about the smoke shops? We have smoke shops on every single corner in the city of Richmond. So, working together, what are you going to do? Thank you.
And we'll start with Mr. Dunning.
Uh, so there actually have been some changes with regard to the street vendors, and, and Councilmember Jimenez mentioned the, um, the, the thing downtown on Thursdays and Saturdays. I think there's progress. Uh, I'm not sure, I think time will tell, whether it actually addresses the problem that the 23rd Street merchants have been, have been talking about for, for quite a while now. So let's see, let's see. And let's get some feedback and see what's working and what isn't. That's about as far as I'll say on that. With regard to the smoke shops, how many smokes? I'm just curious, how many smoke shops do you think we need in Richmond? Who wants more? Who wants fewer? Well, there's ways to do that, but it does come back to both creating the rules and enforcing the rules. And right now, there's a lot of rules on the books, as has been mentioned, that are simply not enforced. What am I going to do? I'm going to do what I've been saying I'm going to do, is to try to actually solve problems by getting all the right stakeholders working on it. I don't know what that answer is yet, Corky, because frankly, if I were to see a smoke shop, or, or see something sold that's not, shouldn't be sold, if I were to call? There's no one on the other side right now. We don't have a regulatory unit. That costs money. And I will say, what I will do, though, is work toward taking care of, uh, an atmosphere where we're more, uh, healthy and supportive of healthy business growth, because all these things cost money. We want to get a regulatory unit back, we got to pay for it. If we start treating our businesses more fairly, perhaps we'll be a, a good environment for more businesses to come and set up shop in Richmond, which will bring more money into our coffers, which will help us pay for these things. So there's a lot of work to do, but we got to stop fighting against each other, we got to have everyone working, as you said, together. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, street vendors, uh, we created a food court, uh, we put, we allocated $200,000 for that, and we are going to allocate more with the surplus that we are coming, eh, to have this year. Another good thing. Please go to Marina Bay and McDonnell Avenue and support the street vendors, because the, the success of that depends on all of us going there and, and, and buying and encouraging them. And we are doing this as a pilot, and we want to have other spaces, so depending on how it goes, but please go Thursdays and Saturdays from 9:00 AM, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I was able to go last time, and I have a really great conversation with the street vendors that are really engaged and hopeful that this is something that they, eh, eh, it could be great. The regulatory, I, I want to say with the, with the smoke shops, we pass a moratorium. Because as they say, like, we, we don't need that many, uh, smoke shops and that. We pass a moratorium, so people, like, new things are not going to, and we are going to, uh, be able to create a process, like the process that we had for liquor stores, uh, so that the community, like, there is public hearings, because right now, with the smoke shop, we didn't have public hearings. So a lot of smoke chat were opening without even going to city council, right? I, I think, like, you were in, in city council and a lot of smoke chats opened, and you didn't even know that, right, Corky? Because it wasn't that process. So we want to have that process. And, like, the, the, what happened was that, uh, many years ago, uh, the enforcement went to the co-enforcement. And in the co-enforcement, because we didn't have enough money, they were little staffing. So we are now ramping up, they had been able to go there, and we are going to have a, a better sense of what it is that we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to take a question from Zoom. What is your experience working with outside organizations, such as the county or the school district, and how can you leverage the experience to support your district's residents? We'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you. As a community organizer, I have been working with many communities, organization here, uh, with the county, this is why Supervisor John Joya endorsed my campaign, because I had been working and he has seen my work in the county. Uh, with the street vendor, we just got to work with the county health department, they are the ones helping us to come up with, uh, the, the right, uh, process to have, for the vendors to have all the permits. So that is, but, uh, I had been working with every, eh, space in the county, uh, we had been, like, invest in people, no prison, was a campaign that worked really hard to reallocate $5.2 million that was coming to the county from AB 109 to, into services. This is why we had the reentry success service center here in Richmond and one in Enya. That was a work that I was working with Save Rhythm Project and many other organizations. That was a work that I was working with Save Rhythm Project and many other organizations. Um, with the Chertif, we were in this conversation, really intense conversations. So he started the collaboration with ICE that was really important for the immigrant community and particular the undocumented community here in Richmond. So I had been, I have experienced because, no, because I had been in city council, but I have experienced because I had been working really hard with many of people who are here trying to support campaigns and trying to support the community in concrete ways, in concrete ways to improve the community. So uh, I will continue to do that. And again, Supervisor George Joya believe in my leadership because we had been working together to really eh, bring concrete results for the community in Richmond and in Contra Costa County. Thank you.
Partnering is absolutely critical. And and when I get into office, I will use my convening power. I I'll just have one vote on the council. Who knows what the makeup of the council will be? It's not it's not about what my one vote will be. But I'll tell you what, I'm going to use my convening power to invite people together. And I'm going to give you a concrete example of how I've done that recently. Two years ago, I got really interested, uh, frankly obsessed with what's going on with homelessness locally and 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 nationally. And I learned about a place in San Antonio, Texas that was on par with San Francisco at the level of homelessness, but over a few years, they dropped it 80%. San Francisco quadrupled. Why? Because they had an extraordinary program called Haven for Hope, and you can look it up, that was a collaboration of unlikely fellows. It was the the uh, the very liberal uh, uh, mayor of the city and a very conservative founder of, guess what, Valero Energy CEO. And rather than demonizing each other, they ultimately worked together and built this program. It only cost $125 million. If you think about it, that's not much to get off its feet. And it's still going today, 92% success rate, meaning when you leave that place, you're still housed a year later. Good luck finding 10% in the Bay Area. It's a story of collaboration and it's a story of inviting people to the table. It came because the mayor reached out to the business community and said, we need help. Can we work together? And they answered that call. Here in Richmond, the business community is demonized. Frankly, if you make a profit, you're seen as evil. And I I'm not exaggerating. That's not the belief that's held by the overwhelming majority of residents of Richmond. So we need to collaborate, we need to partner. We'll say briefly, I've been substitute teaching in our school district in the last year or so. And I can tell you, we need a lot of help there and it's out of the direct control of Richmond. But man, if we could partner, there's a lot of things we could do that would make things better for our youth between transportation and after-school programs and use of space and all sorts of things. So let's partner, let's get everyone to the table. Thank you.
We'll take a question from the audience.
Thank you. Um, earlier the terms mediation and conflict resolution were mentioned. Um, Vice Mayor Jimenez, I'd like to start with you. Can you say something about how the staff of Richmond's rent program provide mediation services that help landlords and tenants resolve issues um, for the vast majority of cases to come up with a resolution that works for all parties?
Yeah, thank you. Um, one of the eh, data that it was shared about this is that uh, the rent program since uh, its initiation had been able to support over 4,000 landlords and tenants uh, to go to this mediation. And the idea is that it helped because then eh, it saved money uh, to go with lawyers and um, and just kind of like the the fight and and the legal status. So the the rent program has been really successful in mediating uh, these cases where it gets to a a good result. And it has been something that we advocated since the beginning uh, of the of the program to make sure that that was part of of what uh, the services will bring. Um, we recognize that sometimes eh, it's difficult um, to pass through eh, communication. So the rent program has been able to support uh, many tenants and landlords uh, to go to that mediation process, saving money and getting results for the community. Thank you.
Uh, in principle, obviously, with my background, I'm going to be a big fan of mediation collaborative problem solving. Honestly, I can't speak to what happens with the rent board. I don't, I don't know specifically uh, what that process looks like. Is it actual mediation in a in a sense of non-adversarial transformative mediation? Is it just dispute resolution? Is it, is there arbitration involved? I don't know. I'd like to learn more. Uh, but I'm curious, if there were 4,000 uh, documented mediations, I think we could answer that question. If there was a a survey or a poll, I don't know if anybody knows if that's a part of the process. But I think it would be really informative to ask the 4,000, you know, the people who participated in 4,000 mediations, how satisfied they are. And if the satisfaction is not somewhat equal on both sides, then in my mind, that's not a successful process. And what I've heard from many housing providers across the city is that they've just given up. They had an issue, they went to the rent board, they felt ignored. I don't know what it is, so this is secondhand. But I just know anecdotally, I've heard from a lot of people that are like, ugh, forget this. Like they're, you know, tenant advocacy groups, which are great, I'm not against them, but there's a lot of those. And if you're a mom and pop housing provider squeaking by on the income of of just your unit that you're renting out, you don't have the funds to go hire big lawyers. You don't, there's no pro bono lawyers out there wanting to support you. I I talked to a guy the other day on Ream Avenue, very interesting fellow because he told, he's, he was a renter in the place I was talking to him. But he's also a housing provider. He rents out a a a house in another part of town. And I asked him, so he's both sides of the coin here. And he said, the system is extraordinarily skewed toward renters. And it doesn't have to be that way. And he was complaining, saying that even though he's a housing provider. So let's go ahead and do a poll. Call up Nick Trailer, see if he's got the data. Uh, how satisfied are the people with regard to whether they were the housing provider or the tenant? And let's find out what the data says.
Thank you. We have time for a few more questions, so I'm going to be sticking to the cards questions because we have quite a few. Um, next one is, a lot of people feel disconnected from the city council. What will you do to make sure everyone feels like they can easily learn what the city council is suing and that our needs are being addressed? We'll start with Mr. Dunning.
Sorry, did you say suing or doing?
Doing.
I, sorry, um, because there is a lot of suing going on in the city. And uh, anyway, we, that wasn't the question. I think if, who here has been to a city council meeting? That's correct. And that's probably why you're here tonight. You're probably part of the bubble of people who are interested enough, informed enough to even, number one, know this is happening tonight. Uh, and number two, choose to come here. But folks, look around. Does this represent 115,000 people in Richmond? No. Not, I'm not saying they all need to be here, but uh, now let's be more specific. This is about District Six. I I see some of you from outside the district, but who's in District Six here? Okay, so maybe half. There's about 19,000 people in District Six. So ask yourself how representative of of District Six this group is. One thing I get a lot when I talk about collaborative problem solving, somebody will say, well, Sean, they won't all come to the table. Or that group or that person won't come to the table. That's okay. You know why? It's not about the person who comes to the table, it's about the perspective that's brought to the table. It's not about how many people have that perspective, it's the fact that that perspective exists and it's heard. And if you're, if you have one perspective that you feel pretty alone and and no one else is agreeing with you, we should be in a city where you don't worry, that you know your voice is still going to be heard. We need to, we need to evolve beyond power politics of who's got the most numbers on their side to get things done. And we need collaborative leaders who hold the space to ensure that every voice is actually heard and leveraged. So what I will do is what I've been saying all night I will do, and look more at my materials, look at other videos. We can only get so much into soundbites here. But it's about actively reaching out and inviting and making sure all perspectives are solved. And having done years of consensus building, I can tell you, you don't need 19,000 people. You need about six different views. Whether there's three people with this view and four people, you need about six, five or six fundamentally different perspectives. And then you've got the ingredients to finding really good solutions.
Thank you. Um, I have been organizing with many communities in District Six. Uh, when people email me, when they reach out, I I told them, let's meet. Uh, we did that with uh, people in Keith and Barrett. We with that, I I did that with the Solano Avenue. We organized and thank you Heather uh, for organizing that. Um, I had been doing organizing uh, with uh, people around many different issues and we have meetings, community meetings where people are there with different point of view and conversation and we had been doing and, but the good thing is that we also need leadership around what the solutions are. Sometimes we come to because we have a problem and that problem is to come to an issue and then finding the solution. When I say I is because I had been helping work, hearing the whole views and said, well, look at, I am inside, right now I am inside the the city and I can see how we can do this. And I go back and say like, hey, look at, this is one idea. What do you think? And this is how we created the traffic calming program. I heard the people, I came and looked for 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 the 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 money. I saw that they were 1.2 million dollar. I convinced my city council to vote for that and this is how we created the the program. Uh, I worked before I got elected with many residents to improve Solano Play Lot. And we worked together, we went to the city council and we advocated. So I will say, uh, I will continue to do that engagement, not only because I am running, but because I am committed as a resident, as a community organizer, to work with every organization here. And this is why many organizations in Richmond are endorsing me, an organization that represent Richmond residents. Thank you.
I think we have time for one more question. Uh, we appreciate all your questions. We have so many cards here and lots of hands. Um, I'm going to read one from Zoom, um, because we have quite a bit of questions from from Zoom. So this is for Councilmember Jimenez. You say you passed a moratorium, however, it was for 45 days, which has passed. What did you do to enforce the moratorium? Were any violators violators of city codes cited? Have any illegal smoke shops been shut down?
Well, I I wanted to um, address that. We passed it for 45 and then the city staff came and we passed it for a year, more, a year. So it's longer. And and we did that because the staff asked us that to have more time to really look into that. So what we are doing right now is that all of the um, small shops have been going, the co-enforcement, I actually, I had meeting with Kevin, who is part of the co-enforcement. And they had been going out, actually last Friday, uh, the staff has a meeting, I have, I wasn't here, I had to go to a funeral in LA. Uh, but it was with the eh, small businesses to present what was the plan and what is is going on. So we have a moratorium. There is going to be uh, some of these small shop that uh, the city found out that were open without permits. These are going to be shut down and the other is going to be, uh, they had been some that had been forever. So it's going to be a process of getting them or complying or 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 cutting downs or or shutting them down. So uh, it's not 45. I think like I suggest to go back to the information is more, and we are doing, like, we hire more eh, co-enforcement. Uh, and we contracted with a co-enforcement company to uh, augment that so we can address that issue. And the staff is coming pretty soon with a a proposal and some policies that we had to implement to address this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, that question was directed just for uh, Councilmember Jimenez.
Great.
Um, so I think those are all the questions we have for today.
Can I, can I at least respond for a minute?
Sure.
Sound all right? Uh, I just want to say, I'm not, I'm not confident that all the smoke shops that are out there are permitted. So again, this could be a situation of there's rules, but are people following them? I don't know the answer to that, but I'm, I will say I'm not very confident. And one indicator is, I was driving down McDonald Avenue uh, a couple of weeks ago and I encountered something very creative. Had never seen this before. It was like a a U-Haul truck with the back open and a a ramp down and a sign next to it with big Sharpie that said, "Smoke shop" with an arrow into the back of the U-Haul truck. I'm pretty sure that wasn't permitted, but I saw it with my eyes. And in the back of the truck, there was like little counters and everything. I mean, it was very innovative. I mean, it's brilliant. It's like, let's take food truck technology into smoke shops. I mean, I gotta hand it to the guy whoever did it, that's pretty smart, um, in terms of, you know. Was it permitted? I doubt it. Did he feel concerned that breaking the rules in Richmond would get him in trouble? I highly doubt it. Again, you're going to hear people say things like, Sean thinks the police are the answer to everything. No. I love the fact that we've got a community crisis response team, uh, the police love that too. There's a lot of good things happening in Richmond. But at the end of the day, if you believe that you can just get away with whatever you want here, it leads to things like this. So uh, I I would, I would say, yeah, you didn't want me to talk, that's all I'll say.
Thank you. Um, so that's all the questions that we have time for this evening. We really appreciate the questions. We had such an influx. Uh, but now we will give time to the candidates uh, for two minutes for a closing statement. Um, and then we'll go ahead and start with you, Mr. Dunning.
Again, thank you for for all the effort that went into putting this on. And thank you, everybody, for coming. You, for better or for worse, are in the bubble. Most people are not. Most people, over the next few weeks, when the ballots arrive and they start, they lay it out on the kitchen table, they try to figure out how to fill it out, or maybe they wait all the way till November 5th. You don't know them. It's probably going to be, I don't know, somewhere over 30,000 people who vote in Richmond, probably more. How many of them are going to be well-informed? How many of them are going to read the good articles that these publications are doing? They're doing great work, but how many people are are we reaching? I knew this, and I know that my approach is a little different, which is why I knew that I had to get out and meet people. And two years ago, I mentioned I covered 530 miles on foot, I met 5,000 people face to face, and I got nearly 8,000 votes. Find me anyone in the history of Richmond politics, as a complete outsider with no name has gotten that. My my messaging doesn't work through conventional channels. We have to meet, we have to talk, it's complex. And yet it doesn't have to be. At the end of the day, it's about making sure your voice matters. This year, I've delivered my little Post-it notes. If you're in District Six, you've seen them on your door. I've delivered these 8,000 times. Not a single volunteer did that. That was me. And that's how hard I'm willing to work. I'm going all in on this. Because I've realized that if we're going to make a difference in the world, I can't change what's happening in Washington DC. But maybe, just maybe, we can make an example out of Richmond, California, one of the most diverse cities in the country. Make an example of how if you leverage that diversity with collaborative leadership, we can find breakthrough solutions like never before. And you know what? I bet there's people out there that could do it a whole lot better than I can. I'm just the one crazy enough willing to try, I guess. And I would love nothing more for this to become a culture, politics in Richmond, to become a culture of who can collaborate most effectively. Let's have it be a competition of who can collaborate most effectively. I'm proud to say the Democratic Party agrees with me, they've endorsed me, and many others surrounding mayors and local communities, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Councilmember Jimenez, you have two minutes.
Yeah, thank you so much, everybody, and the organizers and all of you for attending this event. We will continue to engage the community and do one-to-ones as we do it. I have so many volunteers, a lot of young folks are believing in my campaign. This is why I was endorsed by the John Democrats. The new vision of the Democratic Party is believing in me. I also has been endorsed by the firefighters. I also has been endorsed by the firefighters as a way to say, we believe how you, eh, work in the city with everybody. They spent over $200,000 last election when I was running against me and Melvin Willis. And I got there and I started working alongside with them. And now they are endorsing me because they believe in my leadership and how I had been working with them. All the unions in, in the city has endorsed me, local IFPT Local 21, SEIU 1021. Many community organizations like APEN, CBE, Sierra Club, ACE, and many other communities that had been, had really deep roots in this community. I am a dreamer and as a progressive, I dreamed that we have a better Richmond. We are working towards that. We have been able to stabilize the finances so we can dream about what else we can put into the future of Richmond. Before, we couldn't do that. We receive, uh, as a council, we're $19 million in deficit. And this year, we are going to have $5.7 million in, in surplus. Every year since I had been there, we have been doing that. We have been able to be, uh, financially responsible. Putting money into the, eh, or many, many other things. Um, so go to my website and continue to volunteer with me, knocking doors, talking to everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much and thank you again to the candidates for joining us tonight. Um, and thank you everybody else for coming out. And again, thank you for all the incredible questions. Too bad we couldn't get to all of them because there were so many incredible questions. Um, just so everybody knows, we'll be hosting our final Meet the Candidate Night for District Five on October 8th. You can find more information at the table near the do, near the door or at richman-side.org. Thank you guys again and have a great night.